That does work.
Now you can't.
Cool, yeah, I'm all about going back to. I missed the contact we didn't have during the shutdown.
So this is really ugly, shimmy what I just sent you. But I just sent it.
There were aspects of it I really. I think we're muted, so.
I don't have the agenda either.
Um, I'll forward it to you, it is ugly, but thanks, Nicole. Uh, which email, Ralph? The Comcast net or gmail dot com?
Either one.
You got it on the way to you.
Thanks. So there's no internet on Ruckston. I take it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I know a lot of people don't have it.
Yeah, they let school go today because there was no internet at school, which is interesting.
I I thought the same thing.
Yeah, when I. They never sent us home. Without internet. We still had to go to school.
Exactly, a little little different times at the moment, I guess. Um, okay, so we have one, two, three, four, we're good to go as long as Nicole can. Host this meeting, Nicole.
So Judy's gonna be able to post it, she was just checking to see if we had a forum. Um, I just got. I just, Becca showed me how to download the agenda, so let me send out this new version, the pretty version.
Okay.
Can you guys hear us okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I see you too from parking department, hi James.
How's it going, Shemmy?
Good, good, how are you?
Going all right.
Good, try not to get sick over there.
Oh, I'm doing my best.
And I will. Um, once, if you're going to do the parking report, James, I've got just the month. To month, um, Becky sent me, so I can pull that up since that was not sent out, okay?
And I've I've got most of the like the the revenue reports done. I think there was just one spreadsheet that I didn't have access to that I think it just has um, the same data, it's just. With visuals.
Okay, so if you can share your screen when you get to those, that way everyone could see and that would be really super cool, okay?
Yeah, I can do that.
All right.
James, if you have the report and you can uh, email me, that would be awesome too, if not, then we'll go. It's a little harder to read when you uh. When you shared a screen.
Yeah, I can, I can send that out um, after the meeting.
Um, okay.
And then uh, I can try to get it to everybody else as well, um. But it should have everything that you need in there.
Call is Jody here? I don't think she is. Okay, I got the agenda, I'm gonna forward it to everyone real quick.
Once we get you signed in, I pull that stuff up on my.
Okay.
Okay, I just sent the agenda in a better looking form to everyone. And then whenever Nicole and uh. Judy's ready, we can start.
Let me go and see if Judy's going to uh, come on to meeting, okay, hold on.
Okay, thanks, Nicole.
He should be at a radio station.
What's that noise I hear?
I'm not sure.
Is that better?
Uh, yes.
Okay, we had two lives.
Yeah, we hear a little background noise because it's probably from two different devices, but it's okay. It wa- it's not as bad as before. Yeah, I'm here. Hi, Priscilla, how are you?
Hi, Shemi, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
I could exit the meeting.
Probably gonna be better if it's just one over there, Versari.
Okay.
I think we got bigger problems because Nicole never came back, so.
I came back, I'm here.
Okay, and.
Oh, I'm sorry, you must not have heard me, Judy is not going to participate in the meeting, I'll go ahead and do the roll call and I. I said I would take notes for the minutes.
Okay, thank you, we did not hear you at all, so my apology. Um, okay, this is gonna be interesting though, because I'm looking at the agenda now and I mean, I'm not sure how we're gonna. Approve minutes and stuff like that if we, none of us have it. Um, this is gonna be a little tricky, maybe we can.
So we can pull up the minutes, I, so I'll pull up the minutes then too and send, send those out. Um.
We have.
All of this is available on the website.
Okay, city website?
Yes.
We could approve the minutes next meeting too.
Yeah, that's true, I mean.
Don't have.
If it's not anything important, we can do it next time, Nicole. Save you, save you a little hassle.
Okay, or um, while you're doing the parking report, I can get them sent out and we can do the minutes, just move it to the end of the agenda.
I'm good with that as well, okay, let's call to order, um, Nicole, if you'll be kind and do the roll call for us.
Hey, Shimmy Schomo.
Here.
Michael Versari.
He's here, he's on mute.
Okay. Uh, Rolfe Jacobson.
Here.
And Michael Graham.
He's here as well, they have two devices over there, but he's here as well.
How about a hand sign, guys, and Larry Fox?
Larry is not here, might join us later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, um, all right, we're gonna skip, or we can approve the agenda the way it is. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with just a minor change with moving. The minutes to after the reports, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that would be four to zero.
Or you hold up your hand and then also we'll say that you're approving, guys.
You got it. And then we don't have a picture of Mike Graham, but he's here. Um, all right, reports, parking report, James, would you like to start?
Yeah, and I'll share my screen real quick. Okay, can everybody see that?
Uh, yes.
Great, all right, so overall revenue for the month of December was twenty three thousand, one hundred and thirty six fifty five cents. Uh, that was a thirty percent increase over last year, um, and then an increase from last month of twenty seven percent. Um, transactions were four thousand fifty five, uh, which was a two point four percent decrease. Um, but an eighteen percent increase over last month. Um, Wichita transactions were thirty four, uh, or three thousand four hundred and eighty nine, uh, which was a decrease of six point six percent. Uh, from last year, um, and an increase of nineteen percent uh, from last month. Uh, Smithy transactions for five hundred and sixty six, a thirty five point four percent increase from last year. And a thirteen percent increase from last month. Um, Wichita revenue was at eighteen thousand one hundred and forty seven dollars. Which was an increase of fifteen percent from last year, um, and a eighteen point five percent increase from last month. Uh, submission lot revenue was three thousand five hundred and nineteen, uh, which was an increase of eighty percent from last year. Um, and then an increase of twenty one point five percent last month. Um, permits, we didn't have any permit sales for both months, um. Uh, for both parking lots in the month of December, um, which was a decrease of sixty dollars from last year. Um, and a decrease of eighty dollars uh, from last month. And then for the individual lots, um, this year, we didn't sell any permits um, in December. Um, and that was the same for last year and last month as well, uh, for the Wichita lot, uh, Smithy. No permit sold this year, um, in December, um, which was a dis- decrease of sixty dollars from last year. Um, and a decrease of eighty dollars uh, last month.
All right, thank you, any questions for James?
No.
Okay, I do have a question, uh, James, you might not be able to answer, but do you know if there is a specific reason why Roy is not joining us anymore?
Um, so I don't know, uh, if there's a, a specific reason or if he's just been. Uh, unable to attend because he's occupied with other things, I'm. uh, unable to attend because he's occupied with other things, I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Good, alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Where's Shemi? Kevin.
Uh, Kevin has been out sick, um, for about a week and a half or so, um, so unfortunately was not able to make it today.
Uh, I do have a question for you, how is the thing going, um, that promotion you guys did with bring your tickets back and get like half off if I'm not mistaken and stuff like that, how's that going? Can you give me an update on that?
So we, uh, early on, we got a few, um, uh, takers on the, the paid parking aspects. Um, we didn't have, I guess there was a, a miscommunication, so we, we didn't do parking citations, um, but the, it seems like that is something we're gonna do for next year, um, uh, but as far as the, the, the parking, uh, fine or, or meter reduction, I think we had one person that brought in their, their paid parking ticket and we, we reduced that, um, and then the other four were just straight up donations.
Okay. Um, I think Doll is raising his hand over here, actually, I'm excited that he's here, so, let me see, uh, Doll, did you have anything to say?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, yeah, so Roy got tied up in another meeting, so he asked me if I'd hop on, and Shemi, as you know, I can give an update on both the bridge and the bathrooms.
And I appreciate that. Especially the bridge, um, you know what, let's, uh, let's go ahead and do that, Doll, if you, if you have a minute and you're okay with that, go ahead and do that.
Okay, um, so we did have, so the bridge, the bridge had its, um, and I, it didn't make it to the agenda, but I did send it to Judy so she can distribute it to the group, but it had its most recent bridge inspection. The bridge gets inspected every two years, and fortunately, there were no significant findings, which was what they found again two years ago. So what that means is they're not doing any immediate maintenance requests for the bridge per their criteria.
Okay.
Alright, so it doesn't mean that, I mean, that bridge is still load restricted, and he very much uh, supported that, because if that bridge does get too overloaded, it could cause those cracks and things like that can, to continue to propagate, so the good news is the bridge is in, you know, relatively good shape, and he didn't do, he didn't find any immediate maintenance needs on it, and I will make sure that that report gets distributed to you all, so you have it as well for your records.
I appreciate it, thank you, um, I, I, I did get it from you, I can, uh, I can forward it to the, uh, board members as well. I believe it's, it was from May twenty-twenty-two, is that correct?
Yes, because what they do is they, they do the inspection, they prepare the report, and then they have to get CDOTs concurrents on it before they can share it with the local agency, so that's just long the process takes unfortunately.
Understood, understood, well, that's, that's a good, uh, that's good to hear.
Um, he, the, the bridge engineer.
We're losing you, Doll, I think you're on mute now.
Sorry, my cheek hit my phone, um, the, the bridge in, the bridge engineer did joke, he would recommend removing the bridge one day and putting in box culverts, but there's no immediate reason to do that.
Okay, alright, that's good to know. Um, did you wanna give, uh, at the same time, did you wanna give the report on the restroom over there? I know we met there multiple times, but, uh, might as well update the board.
Sure, so the concrete's all been poured, um, the interior was probably gonna get half painted today and finished up tomorrow, and then they are waiting on the plumber to arrive to do the rough in for the plumbing. That, once that's in, they have to call regional building, regional has to come out and inspect the rough in, it should be an easy inspection, and then that gives the plumber the green light to finish with the plumbing. Um, I did talk, so Shemi, after, after you left, I, the project manager showed up and I talked with him, um, I told him about your absolute last request for them to be done middle of February, and he thinks there'll be, that should be no problem for them to be done the first or second week of February.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you for, uh, confirming that.
Yeah.
Okay, and are they doing the gutters, Doll?
Yes, yes, there'll be gutters put on.
Okay. Alright.
And that's it.
Any questions for Doll about the bridge or the restroom? Alright, perfect, thank you so much for being here, Doll, I appreciate it.
You guys are welcome, you guys have a good afternoon.
You too, thank you again.
Mm-hmm, bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, we'll go to the finance report, Nicole, if you're ready.
Hey, and I don't know, I don't think I sent that out, but I will share the screen here.
No worries.
There's, you know, after you get the parking report, that's pretty much what shows up on the financials. And then, we don't really have anything going on at all with the conservation trust fund, of course, so, does anyone have any questions?
Um, I don't at the moment, I do, I will request if you guys can just send the report later, in case I do have a question, um, I can always ask later in your office or next meeting, if that's okay with you.
Always.
Okay. Alright, any questions for Nicole? I'll take that as a no, alright, mobility and parking board report, uh, I believe they did not meet, but let me just confirm with Rolfe.
They did not meet, and, uh, there's not gonna be a meeting this month either, there's gonna be a, um, what they call.
Retreat, right?
A retreat, so it's gonna be about a three hour retreat coming up in about two weeks.
Okay, alright. Uh, thanks for that, uh, question, Nicole, should we approve all the reports now?
Do you wanna look at the minutes first?
That's, that's why I was asking, did you, were you able to, uh, send them?
I was able to send them, I can also share them, we have a total of three.
Okay, uh, let me see if I can, okay, yep, I see them. I see them, give me one second, okay, I'll. Nicole, send it to everyone's email, so if you guys wanna take a look real quick and read it.
I, I can make a motion that we approve the minutes for September two thousand twenty-two.
You wanna do all the minutes at the same time?
I don't know.
Please, I think we can.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and go into the, um, the twelve, or twelve, fourteen, sorry, not the twelve.
Well, Mike, Mike didn't think he could vote on the later ones.
On all of them, yes.
Oh, that's true, he wasn't present.
He was just there for one of them, I guess.
Okay, let's do it one at a time, that way we know who was there and who wasn't.
I, I know I can motion on September, uh, two thousand twenty-two.
That is correct, you were there, um, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be four to zero, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, next one, let me just pop that one up real quick. Um, okay, December fourteen, it was me, Rolfe, um, Mike and Larry. Let me just read this real quick. Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes from December fourteen meeting.
I'll second motion.
We have a second by Mike Graham, all in favor.
Aye.
Sorry, I had a phone call, say aye.
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 Aye, that would be three to zero, Persadi, I don't think you were there, you cannot vote on that one.
What you got?
Okay. And the last one was a special meeting over there that we needed to, uh, approve something, um.
The family, state.
Yeah, and it was, uh, me, Rolfe and Mike, um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December twenty-second meeting.
I'll second.
Second by Rolfe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be three to zero. Okay, all the minutes are approved, and I'll just go back real quick to the agenda. Okay, approve the agenda consent calendar reports, um, I believe we don't need to approve the reports, if I remember good, Nicole, can you confirm?
We can, we can approve all the reports at the same time, yes.
Okay, alright, I'll make a motion to approve all the reports as is. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mike Graham, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that would be four zero, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay, all business continued, um, okay, car repair from that fallen tree, if you guys remember, um, I just got three estimates from the lady yesterday, um, and I'll just kinda go over them real quick, uh, one is from Ted's Auto Body, um, that one is about fifty-five hundred. Um, another one is for about same kinda money, fifty-four hundred. Um, and the last one is about seventy-one hundred from Don's body and, uh, shop. Um, so now my question is, do we wanna help in any way? Um, that, that, that's my question, uh, what, what, how do we wanna, how do we wanna approach this? Do we, I think there's multiple ways we can go, one is not helping at all, one is helping with some of the expenses, and maybe another, um, maybe to pay if she would have a deductible, which would be, I'm guessing, probably, let's say a thousand dollars, and the last one is if we wanna pay the whole thing. Um, um, I'll leave it up to you guys, let, if, if anybody has, uh, some thoughts, I'd, I'd be happy to hear.
Now, you looked at the estimates?
Um, I, I'd be honest with you, I just got them, well, I just, yesterday, I didn't go over, other than the price, I can't give you anything, I mean, other than the price and the name of the place that gave it, I can't give you anything.
But when you originally saw the damage, it, did it look like it's five thousand dollars worth of damage?
Oh, nowadays, yes, absolutely.
So it's, it's legit, and it is.
Yeah, I would say yes, broken window, uh, the body on the car is dented multiple places where the tree fell on, uh, it dented the frame of the window, so you can't just, if it was just replacing the window, I would tell you this is outrageous, um, but it's not, it's also, it hit the body of the car, it hit the frame of the actual window, so you can't, you gotta, you gotta fix the actual frame to be able to put back a piece of glass. At the moment, you cannot. So, I would, I would say, uh, you know, I don't know, five thousand dollars worth, um, you know, nowadays, probably, uh, the question is, do we, do we feel like we, uh, we need to pay the whole amount, uh, I, I, I think it's, bottom line is, do we, do we feel like we wanna help? It's a regular resident, uh, she did have a pass for the, for the, for the Wichita lot, um, so she paid for it, two hundred and forty dollars, um, i- it's just a question if we would consider helping or not, I did not promise anything to the lady, I just said, I will bring it to the board, and I will let you know if they decide to help in any way. Um, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole amount, um, I know we suggested to begin with, you know, instead of, you know, writing a check to the lady, um, it will be written to the actual body shop, so we're not being taken, you know, by, you know, uh, just writing a check to someone and, and that's it, she, she won't fix it, so it will go straight to the body shop to fix everything, um, that would be, that would be my, my recommendation. Um, now, now it's up for debate, what do we wanna do?
Well, did she say that she has insurance and she?
So, she does not have insurance, uh, she thought she had insurance, um, the only problem she had was the insurance was, the premium was coming out of her dad's account, and her dad passed, and when that happened, she didn't, uh, she didn't know, the insurance just passed, lapsed, and she basically didn't have insurance. Um, that's, that's the scenario over there, so she used to, um, it lapsed, it was taken from her dad's account, her dad passed, the account was closed, they couldn't take any more premiums out of that account because the account got closed, and that was it, she, she never went back, she, she didn't know, she said, so it just, uh, expired and that was it.
Hmm, and, um, she's a resident?
Uh, she is, yes, she's a resident of, uh, the seven hundred block, she parks at, um, she parks at the Wichita, and she works at the Taos Mouse, so she works in town as well.
So, the, the deductible wouldn't work, we'd have to pay the entire amount.
I mean, if we, if you don't feel like we should pay the whole amount, we can say, hey, you know, if you had insurance, um, you know, the deductible would have had, would have been probably a thousand dollars, and that's what we're willing to, uh, to pay, if that's what you wanna do. Um, you know, it's either that, pay the whole amount, not pay any, it's, it's up to us.
Uh, I, I, I like that solution, I think that's a good solution. It at least covers her past and it would have covered her insurance if she had it, I mean, it's not on us that she didn't have insurance.
So you like the thousand dollars, um?
I like that idea, yeah.
Um, Mike Graham, any thoughts?
I think that's a great, fair idea. I mean, and that's even been done by the state in the past, you hit a deer with your car, the state used to give you fifty bucks when you called. Hit a deer with your car, the state used to give you fifty bucks when you called them because, uh. Back then, people had fifty dollar deductible insurance and the state used. For you now, nowadays, I, I don't think anybody offers fifty dollar deductible, but I think a thousand is a pretty nice gift. And I think if she went and talked to one of those body shops, said, here's a thousand bucks, what can you do? I wouldn't be surprised if one of them would fix it.
Okay, alright, uh, Ralph, what do you say?
Yeah, I, it's a tough situation, I sure hate being a. Hard ass on this, but, yeah, like to help her out the whole amount, but. That's a lot of money, five thousand, uh, to her is probably a lot, lot of money.
Definitely, um, you support the thousand dollars?
No, absolutely, I, I absolutely support at least the thousand dollars, yes, yes.
Okay, um, do we still wanna write if, you know, basically now, I'll say. We're willing to do the thousand dollars, we'll write it to the body shop. When you, when she finds basically a place that would do it, maybe, maybe they'll do it for less, but what I'll say is Metro is willing to. Get a thousand dollars towards it. Oh, Larry?
Yes, I just got here.
Okay, we're, we're, we're just talking about that, uh, car that, uh. You know, the tree fell on it, uh, she did give me three estimates yesterday. Um, two of them are about fifty, fifty-four, fifty-three hundred dollars. And the last one is seventy-one hundred dollars, um, so the cheapest is about fifty-three hundred. Now, I was asking everybody what they all think and, uh, you know, I was thinking about, there's. Maybe four, four options, one is not pay at all. Second is, um, maybe pay a thousand dollars as if she would have insurance. Um, and that would be the deductible. And, um, do something else, or the last one is pay at all. What do you think, uh, we wanna do, I think so far, everybody liked the thousand dollar deductible. Kind of an idea.
Wow.
Yeah, get you off guard there?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, uh.
And she doesn't have insurance actually, so.
Well, that is correct.
Yeah, right, do we have insurance for that sort of thing?
Um, that would be a question, I believe, for Nicole.
I can send that to them, but when I worked in insurance, you had to have a coverage for, you know. You have car insurance to cover your car. Your contents inside your car are covered by your homeowner's policy, so I don't know that our insurance would cover that.
Well, don't, don't we have, uh, some sort of liability insurance for something happens in our lot, but, uh.
I don't know if it will cover that, I can certainly contact them.
Uh, just, just a thought Larry, though, if we, if we're gonna use insurance for that, our insurance is gonna go up, just letting you know.
Yeah, but not by five thousand.
Uh, not, not, not by a lot, uh, I'm not sure, but usually it will, it will bump up.
That is a consideration.
We, what do we cover, very insurance for?
Oh, I ask myself, I ask myself all the time.
Oh.
Because we don't wanna be self insured, we, remember that we have a policy that covers you guys from slander, so. Think of yourselves.
My experience has been whenever I put a claim in, the insurance company gets it all back from me. They, they immediately make some kinda little increase and over time they get all that money back.
The, that all is good, but this one is, she's gonna be out. Four thousand dollars if we don't put it on our insurance.
That is correct, but, but don't forget Ralph, that it's not your fault she did not have insurance.
Yeah, it is not.
And we can't assume that the insurance will cover it.
Right. That's true, so. Because her, yeah, it, it might not, it's a damage to the car itself.
Yeah, the car still runs and drives, right?
That is correct.
So you can drive on with a dent in your car, now does, does the window leak?
Uh, there is no window, it was shattered completely, she's driving right now with, uh, tape all over it, covering it.
And it's probably not in the manner that a new window can be put in, cause it's bent or something.
That's exactly what it is, yeah, if it was just a window, it would be, you know, so easy to just get the back windshield back. And, uh, you know, that, that wouldn't be, it, it would be probably four or five hundred dollars and it would be. A done, a done deal, um, that is not the case, uh, just because the dented frame and stuff like that.
Have we tried asking a windshield shop if they think they can fix it?
I, I haven't, um, I just asked her for three estimates like we talked about last time. To fix it and that's what she came up with.
Yeah, she came back with a too high a one almost.
Uh, yeah, she might be, I mean, she, she probably, uh, went and, you know, told him, hey, whatever it is to fix everything, let me know, blah, blah, blah. Um, you know, that's why I was. Trying to think about a good solution and that thousand dollars thing with the, you know. If you were, if, if she would have a deductible, then it would be, you know, sometimes people have a deductible for five hundred, by the way. Um, I, I was going a thousand dollars just, uh, you know, just to be able to cover a little bit more.
Yeah, and she'll. If we do give her a thousand, we, since we're not gonna pay for the entire amount, we should probably just give her the money in her name and she can. Get somebody to fix it.
I, I, I kinda like Mike's, I kinda like Mike's idea about, you know, maybe going in there and telling him, hey, you know, I have about. I don't know, fifteen hundred dollars or so, and would you do, would you do the work for me, can you fix it for me? And, and maybe like we talked about before, maybe she did went and say, hey, you know what? Whatever it is, fix everything over here, fix this, fix that, fix the window, fix the dance and. You know, maybe some of it isn't from the tree, maybe it is, I'm not sure. So, uh, I, I, I don't like writing checks specifically. Specifically to people, just hand it to them, be honest with you, that's why. It's, you don't know how they're gonna spend it, I mean, we're, we're, we're writing a check specifically to help her to fix that car that got. You know. You got damage on our lot.
So do we think that the insurance isn't gonna cover it probably, is that what we're all conferring or we're not gonna bother with it, right?
Um, I'll be honest with you, if you ask me, I'm against it, I don't wanna buy, I don't, I don't wanna do that because it's gonna create more. More work, more stuff for me to do and follow up, more stuff for Nicole to look at. It's more of an expense, I much, you know, between the two, I much rather just say, hey, you know what? Here's a thousand dollars, this is the best we can do. Um, you know, uh, you know, because we, we don't wanna go with the fifty-five hundred dollars, uh, or five, five thousand dollars, so. I mean, a thousand dollars is better than nothing, I would, I would think.
Yep.
I'm, I'd just like to add that I went and bought license plates yesterday. And I could not buy license plates until I showed them my insurance card. And then, when, you know, you're required to have insurance to drive in Colorado. The other issue is, the insurance you're required to have is not gonna cover a tree fall on your car. That insurance is in addition to the insurance you need to be able to drive. So, I'm kinda thinking that a thousand bucks is really generous of us. But I'm also thinking that, as I've already said, that. These people would probably do it cheaper if they were presented with the no hassle, you don't have to. You don't have to argue with the insurance company. Because, you know, the insurance companies kinda lean on the body shops and want them to use not originally, uh, equipment parts. And then the body shop wants to use the original equipment, which costs more. And there's an argument in there that they won't have to do if it's a cash, you know, just kind of a straightforward. Cash deal to fix the car, I mean, it's a check, it's not gonna be cash, but it's equivalent of cash. But it'd be interesting to see if a body shop would do it for a thousand. But I think it's kinda, I think we're just being pretty nice to give a thousand. But, you know, I don't know, I'll go, I'll kinda go along with whatever you guys decide, those are just my thoughts.
Okay. Larry, any thoughts?
Well, I guess I keep coming back to, uh, whether she had insurance or not. Uh, no, no. We're only required to have liability insurance, we're not required to have comprehensive insurance. Uh, by, by the state, uh, we don't have, we have to insure the other guy's car, but we don't have to insure our own. Uh, the thing that I keep thinking about is, guys, this was our fault. This is our tree and it fell on, on somebody who, uh, parked in our lot.
Well, I, I don't think it's our fault Larry, I mean, we did have somebody trimming that side of the lot. Um, before, we didn't have the other side trimmed because I was looking for someone with a lift. Uh, you know, one of those boom trucks or whatever you call them. Um, and at that time Jeff Jones was, you know, was telling me that the city is gonna help there. Well, that never happened and he, he left and that never happened, but the other side did get trimmed. Um, and, and they left it this way, so either they didn't notice that it's, uh, in bad shape. I mean, the, the tree was kinda hollow from the inside, you, you wouldn't be able to tell that it's. Dead or no good, so I, I'm. I just wanna state that I'm not, we're, we're not taking fault for this, the only thing we're doing is seeing if we wanna help or not. That's, that's what, that's how I feel, I, I'm not gonna say that we're guilty in any way. This is an act of God, it just fell down, um, at the wrong place at the wrong time, that's how I see it. Now the question is if we wanna help or not. Sorry for interrupting you.
Oh, that's okay, uh. I don't know, let me just turn the question back to everybody else, if that was you parked in there, whether you had insurance or not. Uh, how would you feel about?
Yeah, yep, you're, you're, you're right, and on my old truck here, I only have liability. So my insurance wouldn't cover a tree falling on it, would it? No, it's only gonna cover the other person's car when I run into them, so you're right, so I would be out too and I would be upset, so.
But that's a risk you took when you decided to go liability and not comprehensive.
Right.
Well, but the, i- it's not a risk she took by parking in our parking lot.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I definitely.
I, I don't know, I guess I, I'm, I'm fully mixed about it, I just think if it, if it happened to me. Through no fault of my own, that somebody damages my car, it. I, I don't know, that's why I wonder about our insurance, I, I'm not worried about our rates going up. I'm, I'm, because that's what I buy insurance for. I didn't buy insurance to get the cheapest rate I could, I bought it to cover me when something happened.
Right.
Let me, let me ask Nicole, is that insurance that we've got, is it Sursa? Nicole?
Our, our insurance is with Pinnacle, or your insurance is with Pinnacle.
But that's for workman's comp, right?
And property casualty.
Okay, so what's the chance they would pay?
I don't have any idea.
If I hear you guys right, you guys wanna check the insurance path, so if that's the case, then. We can just ask Nicole to do that and help us and kinda take a look. And maybe we'll have a, an answer for the next meeting.
I will, I will put that on my list of things to do.
Yeah, because I'm definitely changing my idea that maybe we should pay for the entire amount now too, so. To make her whole.
Yeah, I'd like us to look into the insurance end of it, cause that's what we buy insurance for.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, well, I agree, but I also think that it's really hard to get them to pay anything, I was gonna say if it was Sursa. My experience is, the only person I ever heard of that they pay to claim on was Bud Ford. Was the only guy that ever collected anything, now Nicole probably knows better than I do.
We, we, unfortunately, we, we've collected stuff from Sursa many, many times.
Have, yeah.
Door backups and car accidents are, are the famous ones.
Well, if you know how to check it, let's, let's check it, and then we will decide if they say yes, great, if they say no. Then we just decide how much we're gonna give her, we already said at a thousand, I'm leaning for more. Larry's probably leaning for the entire amount and we can decide then.
Okay, let's, uh, let's go for that solution Nicole, then, uh, we would love for you to do a little bit of research over there on the insurance for us. And, uh, let us know, next meeting, um, what, what, what did you find?
Or as you being president, you could possibly, um, okay with her to, to do the claim even beforehand.
What do you mean, Ralph?
You have the authority, I'm sure, you know, we've, we don't need to.
Ralph, let me look into it because we don't know how to file a claim.
Yeah, that's, I know, I do not envy you on that, do not envy you.
Pinnacle is only for Metro, Sursa is what we use for the city, so you guys have your own policy. I don't, this will be brand new territory once again.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It's okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, everyone's good with that direction, we're good on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright.
I, I think we're all still, all have different opinions of it now.
Yeah, and that's okay, we don't, uh, we don't, we don't always need to agree on everything.
Well, look to it, you know, and see what they'll do.
Absolutely, absolutely. Alright, all business car repair, we went through, uh, the restroom though, was, uh. And then gave us the report, same about the bridge, new business, and this is where we really needed Elena. Uh, because she was telling me that, uh, we really need to start this Nicole about the election. Do you know if we're gonna have any kind of a repercussion over here because she's not here?
So I emailed everybody the two resolutions and I can pull those up so we can take a look at them. Basically, the special districts now must, must have elections on every odd year. So it's not something we can get out of.
Okay.
So that's what the resolutions are about, let's see. Um, I don't know if it's easier for you to look at the ones that were emailed or if you will meet them up here.
Pull them up, yeah.
Your screen.
We see it.
Oh, you see it?
Okay, yeah, you, we see your screen. So what's it saying?
Whereas pursuant to thirty-two dash one dash eight zero four, the Board of Directors of Management Springs Metropolitan District. El Paso County, Colorado is authorized to designate a designated election. El Paso County, Colorado, is authorized to designate a designated election official. The D E O to exercise the authority of the board in conducting the election. And whereas pursuant to one dash thirteen dot five dash five thirteen, the board can authorize the D E O to cancel the election upon certain conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of Manitou Springs Metropolitan District, El Paso County, Colorado, that the board hereby names Elena Krebs as the D E O for the regular special district election scheduled for the second day of May twenty twenty-three. The board hereby authorizes and directs the D E O. If the only matter before the electors is the election of persons to office, to cancel said election and declare the candidates elected. If at the close of business on the sixty-third day before the election, there are not more candidates than offices to be filled, including candidates filing affidavits of intent to run as write-in candidates. The board further authorizes and directs the E D E O to publish the post, a notice of cancellation of election at each polling place and in the offices of the D E O, the county clerk and recorder of each county in which the district is located. The D E O shall also notify the candidates that the election was canceled and they are elected by acclamation pursuant to one dash eleven dash one oh three and one dash thirteen dot five dash five thirteen. If the D E O has canceled the election, the D E O or district will file this resolution together with the notice of cancellation with the division of local government.
Very straightforward. And she's willing to do that. Be our D E O.
I just have a question though. What happens if uh we do this and Elena is not here by May second?
Well, why would you put that out there, first of all?
Yeah.
Because every time I speak to someone at the city, the week after, they're not there.
Well, since Elena decided to name herself, let's just go with she's going to be here. How does that sound?
Yeah.
That sounds good to me. I was.
Otherwise, I would be, if it was going to be every year, I would definitely say, let's change it to deputy city clerk. But since she did this, let's leave it.
You got it. Okay, alright.
Somebody wanna move for the resolution?
I do. I wanna m- m- move that we accept the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
That was Larry. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. I believe that would be five to zero. Mike, I didn't hear both mics. I didn't hear your voices. I just wanna confirm.
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
You got it. That would be five and zero.
Okay, lovely. And then we have another resolution here. Um, resolution calling for the twenty twenty-three regular district election. Terms of office of the directors of Manitou Springs Metropolitan District shall expire after the regular dis- special district election to be held on May second twenty twenty-three, after which the newly elected successors take office in accordance with the provisions of the Special District Act and the Colorado Local Government Election Code. An election must be conducted to elect three directors to serve for a term of four years and pursue it of C R S one dash one dash one one one. The Board of Directors of Manitou Springs Metropolitan District is authorized to designate an election official to exercise the authority of the board in conducting an election. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Manitou Springs Metropolitan District that the regular election of the eligible electors of the Manitou Springs Metropolitan District shall be held on May second twenty twenty-three behe- between the hours of seven AM and seven PM pursuant to and in accordance with the Act, the code or and other applicable laws. At the time, three directors will be elected to serve a four-year term. So because of this new law where it has to be on um odd years, it has extended the term limit to be four years so that we can be on that odd year. Okay. So back to reading the rest of this. The election shall be conducted as a mail ballot election in accordance with the relevant provisions of the code. The designation, designated election official shall develop a plan for conducting the mail ballot election, which will be made available to the public. There shall be no election precinct or polling place. All mail ballots shall be returned to the designated election official's office at six oh six Manitou Avenue, Manitou Springs, Colorado, eight oh eight two nine. The Board of Directors hereby designates Elena Krebs as a designated election official for the conduct of the election on behalf of the district, who is hereby authorized and directed to proceed with any action necessary or appropriate to effectuate the provisions of this resolution and of the Act. The code or other applicable laws. Among other matters, the designated election official shall publish the call for nam- nominations, appoint election judges as necessary, appoint the canvas board, arrange for the required notices of election, imprinting of ballots and direct all other appropriate actions be accomplished. Self nomination and acceptance forms are available at the designated election official's office located at the address noted above. All candidates must file a self nomination and acceptance form with the designated election official no later than the close of business Friday, February twenty-fourth. If the only matter before the electors is the election of the directors of the district and if at the close of business on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, there are not more candidates than offices to be filled at the election, including candidates timely filing affidavits of intent no later than February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. The designated election official shall cancel the election and declare the candidates elected. Notice of such cancellation shall be published and posted in accordance with the code. Pursuant to C R S one dash eleven dash two oh three point five, any election contest arising out of the ballot issue or ballot question, election concerning the order of the ballot or the form of the content of the ballot title shall be commenced by petition filed with the proper court within five days after the title of the ballot issue or ballot question is set. If any part of provision of this resolution is adjusted to be enforceable or invalid, such judgment shall not affect, impair or invalidate the remaining provisions of the resolution, it being the board's intention that the various provisions therefore are service serviceable. Any and all actions previously taken by the designated election official or the secretary of the Board of Directors or any other person acting on their behalf pursuant to the Act, the code or other applicable laws are hereby ratified and confirmed. The provisions of this resolution shall take effect immediately. All done.
Thanks for reading that for us.
Okay, and who, who is it that is up for election this year?
Um, if I remember good, it's uh you and Barsati, but please confirm, Nicole.
See, the last thing I looked at is pretty much said everybody had to be because of the difference in the, in the years. Because we can't, because we don't have an election next year because it's an even one, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the end-all answer for that. I'm sorry that Elena or Judy aren't here for that.
Okay, um, i- if, if I remember good, Larry, um, I believe last time I asked Elena, um, it was you and Barsati. Uh, but if, if that's the case and now it's different because of the odd years, um, we'll have to hear from Elena again.
But the important thing is she wanted to make sure that you guys got this resolution and you knew that you needed to um do this.
Fill it out and get it in by February twenty-fourth.
Right.
Okay, um, did someone wanna go forward with this resolution?
Yes, I'll, I'll uh
Move?
Move that we uh pass the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That would be Barsati. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be five to zero unless I hear anybody that says no. That would be five to zero, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just go back to the agenda real quick. Alright, um, we got the two resolutions, okay. Last new business is a consideration of a request for parking at the Wichita lot on January twenty-first. Um, the request came from um Mike Barsati um and Priscilla. Um, they are present and I'll let them speak. At the time when the request came in, I didn't have much more uh detail, so I just added to the agenda and I'll let them uh give you a little bit more detail about that. Um, my condolences, um, Barsati, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a quick correction. It'll actually be for the Schmishney lots. Yeah, um, and we have what, forty-four spaces there, I believe?
Um, forty, forty-four.
Forty-four. Um, the request would uh i- is for my sister um for the memorial service of my brother-in-law. Um, she just requests, uh, how many hours would you?
Three.
Uh, three hours, uh, she would pay for it. Uh, so all those spots would be paid for, for three hours and the twenty-first between the hours of
Three thirty and six.
Three thirty to six thirty. I think it's a Saturday day.
It's a Saturday.
Saturday.
And, and if you are willing, I would pay for an attendant to, to be there to um make sure that it's exclusively used for this purpose.
Okay, um, I, I think an attendant would be a must be honest with you if we are going forward. Uh, just to make sure that you're gonna have enough spaces. And are you trying to get all of them? Are you gonna need all of them, Priscilla?
Well, huh, yes. Right now, I've had over a hundred people respond. And so we don't have parking, that kind of parking anywhere in Manitou really, but at our house, which is where my husband wanted the celebration. So the uh Merrimott is graciously giving me their parking lot, but there's only twenty spaces there. So yes, I would need all of those spaces. Um, and would pay for them whether somebody parked. I mean, suppose people don't show up, but um better to have than not need them and we.
Okay, I, I wasn't necessarily asking because of the money. I was asking because specifically at the Schmishney, there is a lot of residential parks over there already.
People who live there parked in the lot.
Yes, man, there's people that, yes, a lot of them, a lot of the residents are using that lot. Um, you know, because they don't have residential parking, so they buy a parking pass and they use it. And at times, that place can be, can be full. Um, just, just by the parking uh passes. I, I'm just letting you know.
Is there a way for you to, I mean, do you know how many residents have permits in that? And therefore, how many spaces would be available?
If James is here, he's gonna be able to tell us. Um, I can tell you that lot sells out. If I remember good, last year we were at a hundred and sixteen percent, which means they sold more passes for that lot that there is spaces.
Wow.
Yes, but um, did you try and speak to the city and see if they can help as well?
I didn't even think of it, to tell you the truth, because I don't know what they'd be able to do for me. Right now I have um Chuck Murphy Shuttle Service waiting to hear what, because they will shuttle people up to the house. So if the city were to provide that could make a difference as well, but I don't know what you're thinking.
I was thinking maybe specifically that day to maybe ask. It's either ask the parking passes, um, you know, um, residents to s- to uh park on the street. And then ask the city not to give uh any any uh parking tickets that specific day after, let's say, three o'clock. Um, if, if possible, and, and if James is still here, he might be able to tell us yes or no. Um, okay, let's, let's speak to the, let's see what the board is thinking. Do you guys think we can help here?
Yes, I'm, I'm Larry. Hi, Priscilla.
Hi, Larry. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. I, as a side note, I might say Priscilla was most instrumental in helping my daughter in first grade many, many years ago.
Oh, she was one of my favorites and you and her mother were so supportive of me. Thank you.
Yes, so yes, I would, I would recommend that we do whatever we can to help out.
And I s- I support that. Uh, any, anyone else has uh has a, either a
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm, yeah, I, I agree with that sentiment too. We can do whatever we can. I don't know what we can do, but we could put a sign up the day before saying, uh, there's gonna be no parking in here. Not all the car, there'll probably be a couple cars left there, but we'll be able to go around them. But whatever we can do, I say we support it and just do it.
I'd like, I'd like to see us support it and I don't think we need to charge.
Um, I don't, I don't either. I don't either.
I also think maybe we should look beyond just Schmishney and maybe I could ask um, Adventures Out West if we could use some of their parking up at the zip line.
That would be, that would be nice.
Well, I'll ask Greg. I've got a pretty good rapport with Greg, so I will ask him. But maybe we can think of something else too, like who owns that one hotel up there that's been for sale?
Millhouse?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Who's, maybe, maybe somebody else could help us too, but I'll, I'll take on asking Greg.
Okay, um, I'll stop by at the, that new, that hotel you're talking about across the street over there. Um, it used to be a different name. Now it's something else. Um, the, I, I can't remember the name of it, but uh I believe her name is Michelle. Um, I spoke to her, I believe, a year ago when, when I was looking at that property. Um, I'll, I'll try that as well. Um, other than that, I know it's far away, but they could use the Wichita lot as well.
It's just, I think this is all awesome. I'm just concerned about shuttles. You know, shuttling around, picking people up. So I was trying to keep it condensed. At least the Millhouse Motel or whatever it's called now is close as is the Adventure Lot too.
Okay.
So people could park there and walk, you know, or one direction or the other to make it easy for the shuttle service.
Do the shuttle buses go beyond the roundabout at Ruxton and Manitou? Do they go up to?
No, I don't think they do. The shuttle, are you telling me about the big purple?
The regular, yeah.
They, they come up Ruxton, but they, they do not go up the side street.
But they don't go up Manitou.
I don't know. I don't know that I've seen them go that. So I think they come around the roundabout and that's it. Yeah.
Okay, so is James gone or is he still with us?
Actually, that's, that's a great question because it would be nice if he's here, James.
He's muted.
He's muted, yeah.
James, could you unmute and say that again?
He might be away from his.
Oh, he's there.
You're muted, James.
Over, over there.
He's there. He's just muted. Yeah.
James.
There he is.
Yeah, there you go.
Between office operations and this, I apologize. Hey, we, we have a small request over here. I think it's uh, it, it should be uh fairly easy to do. On that specific day that we're looking at, I believe it's on the twenty-first. Can we keep everybody in-house and not give tickets at the a thousand block of Manitou Ave?
Um, I would, I would have to get something like that approved. Um, and then we would likely have to go as far as, as just coning space off. Um, and I would look at either the, the thousand block there on the paid parking. And I would look at either the, the thousand block there on the paid parking. Or along Soda Springs Park or potentially both if we have an idea of how much space. Is wanting to dedicate towards that. And I believe the city has a, is a pricing. For that type of arrangement, I'd have to, I'd have to look into it. To see exactly what that would be. As far as going outside of that, I, I would have to, to, to get with. Either Kevin, if he comes back in, in time for that or work with Roy on that. As far as approval. But those are both things that we can do, whether or not there would be a cost associated with it would depend on. On, on what I can get approved on that front.
Okay, could you, could you possibly take a look and maybe. Let me know and also. Maybe I'll grab Priscilla's info or maybe she would just walk down and speak to you directly. Can we do that?
That would, that would work. I'll, I'll look into it all the same, just try to get an idea. Of what. Kind of parking you, you want to see combed off for the event. And then it would just be reserved specifically for. The folks at that event and all we would ask for enforcement purposes is that you just distribute a. A flyer of some sort so we can notify the folks that are attending the event. But as far as actually reserving the space, I, I do know the city has implemented a. A pricing structure for that. So I don't know if, if, if that can be waived or not, I would have to, to look into that further.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for digging into that. Yeah, no problem. Okay, so. Just to sum it all. Are we? Gonna block that, have an attendant? And have as many parking spots available? For that? Is everyone okay with that? And can we go forward? And, and also. No, no charge, my apologies.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely for that and maybe use one of our employees to help out too, if need be.
I, I thought I should at least pay for your attendance hours. They make what, twenty? Do they make twenty-five an hour?
They make about fifteen or sixteen an hour.
Oh, I would be happy to pay for their time. If that's what you end up supporting.
Thoughts?
Yes, I would, I would be in favor of that and I'd say we don't charge her for the parking lot itself.
Okay.
I'd, I'd favor that.
Alright, did we want to vote on that? Or is that something we don't have to?
Yes, we'd better vote on it.
Okay, did you want to make a motion, Larry?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we. Reserve as many parking spaces in the lot as possible for Priscilla. To host her. People to park at, at no charge.
Hold on, let me see if I can get the wording on this, okay? Reserve as many parking spaces as possible. In the Schmishney Lot or in both lots?
I think the, the Schmishney Lot, isn't that what you were asking about?
Yes, it gets people closer to. You know, my home and. It's easier for a shuttle to just collect people at that part of town, I think. And. For. I, I'm sorry, for. Or for.
Let's see, what were the, what were the hours again?
Three thirty to six thirty.
Okay. Or three thirty to six thirty on January twenty-first. And Priscilla, then you would pay for the attendant if we used our attendant?
I would.
And, okay. Okay, just a question, is it supposed to be our attendant or are you providing one, Priscilla?
I understood that you would want to have one of your people. And that makes sense to me.
As long as one of them can do it, absolutely, no problem.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Barsati, I know you said you'll second. But I'm gonna go with a different second, just so.
Yeah, I would.
I'm, I'm not open for favors.
I, I think that Barzati might have to reclusive himself from voting on that.
Yeah, I think so too, so I would gladly second that motion.
Awesome. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that would be four to zero, Barsati did not. Vote on this.
Correct. Okay, and the election, the, the individuals up for election, I confirmed with Judy are Barsati, Fox and Graham.
And Graham, okay. Alright. Alright, any questions or any discussion on what we all spoke about today?
I just hope that all three people will put their nomination in by the, the deadline of the end of February. We need to keep our same board, I think intact. Also avoid the expense of election, so I hope that. We can keep the same members. That's mine.
Neil, the self-nominating forms are available now, are they?
And. I, I guess I will ask, I'll ask Elena or I'll send her an email asking her to send out a form to each of you. Does that sound good?
Okay, that would be even better because I, I'm gonna be in. Manatee tomorrow, but other than that, I don't know when I'll be down there the next time.
Yeah, and I don't, she's been sick all week and Kevin's been out for, you know. Almost two weeks, so. I don't know when she'll be available.
Okay, okay. Well, if it can be sent or if I, you know, then that would. That would be helpful.
I don't know if it has signed a witness, I don't know.
And I believe I gotta stop by and sign those two resolutions. Can you confirm that, Nicole?
That is correct.
I'll be there tomorrow. Alright, I don't believe there was public, other than. Priscilla over here, but if I'm wrong, this is your time to speak. Any public comment? That would be no. If everyone is good, I'm gonna get this meeting adjourned.
Okay.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone for being here.
Thank you. So Mike, you have a question. So you're friends with. I said.